All right, thank you. It is 5:00 PM on Monday, December 7th, 2020, and I'd like to call to order this joint school board and assembly meeting to order. At this time, Kitty, if you could please do roll call for the school board. Meeting to order. At this time, Kitty, if you could please do roll call for the school board. Meeting to order. At this time, Kitty, if you could please do-
President Michaelis?
-roll call for the school board. Meeting to order. I have no idea what that is.
I know, I don't either.
For the school board.
Um, let's pause for just a moment.
I have no idea what that is.
I know, I don't either. We'll just get it worked out here on the background chat and we'll be right back in order, hold on. I believe that we are good to continue, so I'll just go on with roll call. Let's see, President Michaelis?
Yes, here.
Vice President Bellamy?
Present.
A member Donley? Member Hildy?
Present.
Member Holloman? Member Marsette?
Here.
Member Mitchell? I believe Member Mitchell is online.
I see Member Mitchell, I also see Member Donley online as well.
Thank you so much, I will mark the president and you do have a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Jennifer, if you'd be so kind, please do the roll call for your assembly.
Yes, thank you, President Michaelis. Chair Rivera?
Present.
Vice Chair Whedleton? Ms. Allard? I believe Mr. Constant is excused. Mr. Dunbar?
Here.
Ms. Kennedy?
Ms. Kennedy did let me know she'd be running a little bit late.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. LaFrance?
Here.
Mr. Presverdia? I did see Mr. Presverdia in attendee list. Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Zalatell?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have our flag salute and I will ask Member Marsette if you would please kindly do that for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag for which it stands. How about some help here, I'm having a mental block.
I pledge allegiance-
Allegiance to the flag-
To the flag- Of the United States of-
The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I would say the first thing to go is the mind.
Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge with gratitude the Dinana people, both past and present, who have lived on these lands since long before Ingrid was here. May we all be good stewards of these lands. Tanaan. Next up in our agenda is the approval of the minutes from our September 11th, 2020 joint meeting. They've all been sent out to both bodies. If I can get a motion and a second to approve, that would be wonderful.
I move to approve the minutes.
My second, this is Star Marsette.
Thank you. Were there any questions or comments on the minutes as presented? Not seeing any. Instead of doing a large roll call vote, I will ask for anybody in opposition instead. So by unanimous consent, those minutes pass as written, thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda, same thing, if I can get a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Star Marsette, I move that we approve the agenda as stated.
And then, shall I second?
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions, modifications requested by the bodies? Is there any opposition to the agenda as written?
No opposition from me, President Michaelis, but just wanted to note for the record, we've been joined by Assemblymember Presverdia.
Thank you. Seeing no opposition, the agenda passes as written with unanimous consent. Moving forward, just a quick thing, our school board is very used to using Zoom as a tool and we use the raise hand feature in the bottom right of most screens. So when I see your hands come up, that's how I'll know to be able to reach out and call on folks that do have questions or comments as we move through our items on our agenda. So the next item up is item number D, financial planning. It is our 2021 pro forma coming up and at this time, I would like to hand it over to Dr. Bishop and her team to walk us through that at this time. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President, and at this time, our Chief Financial Officer, Jim Anderson, will take us through the pro forma in brief. Again, the longer presentation with more data and information was sent to the Assembly this afternoon and this is a brief version, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, slide. And Andy Ratliff is also online, he's the owner of Mini Gigabytes of Data that produced our projections and assessment for the pro forma and he will be available to speak on any detailed questions should they arise. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this particular brief is really to focus in on what we think our projected budget gap is for next year with some assumptions. Our assumption is things look next year like they look this year in terms of programs and things like that, with the exception of metrics-based adjustments. So we are projecting less students next year than we had last year, so naturally, those metrics-based things, school staff, things like that would reduce slightly as well, but everything else assumes a carryover, so things kind of look the same way. We're now getting our proposed budgets from schools and departments. Over the next couple of weeks, we will refine the estimates and in January, start the budget development process. Slide, please. So I think most of you are pretty familiar with the State Foundation formula, I think there's about 52 or 53 calculated steps within, but it's really six broad areas. The very first one, school size adjustment, I think most understand that smaller schools get more per student than a larger school. This was the first year where the state's Hold Harmless provision kicked in and so we had more than 5% loss between last year and this year due to COVID and so we were able to save about 75% of those losses this year. Next year, assuming that we still have less students than we had last year, which we are projecting, the second year of the Hold Harmless would kick in and we would get a 50% savings, so it does help soften the pain, but it certainly doesn't make up for the instant loss of several thousand students. If you look at the bottom, sometimes you're here at Budget Advisory Commission, we'll talk about ADM and AADM, the number 42,863 is the average daily membership, that comes out of the Oasis count in October, it goes through all these steps, it keeps getting multiplied by factors and ends up at the number on the bottom right, the 75,000 plus, that gets multiplied by base student allocation and that's where we start determining our revenue. Slide. So if you look at what we're projecting for next year, I already talked about, we use current staffing metrics other than projected enrollment losses. You'll see in blue the CARES Act and COVID-19 costs, we did assume at this point that things would carry over, the one-to-one computers, software costs, a lot of different things that cost more this year. For this particular projection, it was more conservative to assume those continued. As you go down on salaries, wages, and benefits, we do include what's in current approved contracts. Third bullet down though, we do have, or will have, six open contracts that will be in negotiations this year and that has not been included in the budget deficit, but we'll talk about that in a little bit further. And then as you look under services, supplies, and equipment, heat and electric generally increases every year, telecom, as we look at year-over-year this time, would include a lot of the internet access that we also paid for low-income students and their families so they could do online learning. Same for instructional software, student allotments, and liability insurance always increases. Slide. So if you look at the general fund preliminary budget gap, you can see that year-over-year, the very top three lines, general fund revenue, local, state, and federal, there is a drop of about $10 million in revenue between this year and next year and that's really because of lower students, a little bit of impact aid and some other things. Then you look under general fund expenditures and a lot of that is, I'm sorry, for the expenditures, a lot of that includes those CARES Act provisions that we've carried over, quite a few personnel for one-to-one and software and others. So if we look at our projected budget gap right now, it's about $25 million for next year. That's our starting point in January. The six additional contracts could add an additional $5 to $10 million to that, depending on how they settle out. Slide, please. If you look at our transportation fund budget gap, we get paid for transportation, $483 per student in a neighborhood school, so although our correspondent schools picked up a lot more students, they don't get transportation funding. We're also expecting, again, a little bit lower enrollment and you'll see that in the detailed pro forma that went out this afternoon. So we expect another $2.8 million, total a little over $28 million for our funding gap for next year. Slide, please. When we look at going into developing the budget, we really are about 90%, a little bit less, of all of our revenue goes towards people. So I just did one quick slide, we have about 50 different ways of looking at it, but this one will give you an idea of where our money goes and when you're looking at something that's a $28 to $38 million budget gap, if you look from left to right on the bars, that's how many millions of dollars that particular bargaining group gets in terms of salaries and benefits. And then next to it, of course, is the number of FTE. So you can see that the vast majority of our FTE is really from maintenance through AEA is the vast majority of all personnel in the district. So as we look at, how do you meet a 28-plus million budget gap, knowing that personnel are our biggest cost, this kind of highlights really where we can come up with that kind of shortfall. Slide, please. Okay, are there any questions, please?
All right, in the queue, I see that Chair Rivera has his hand raised. Sir?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a question, but just wanted to note for the record that we've been joined by Assemblymember John Whedleton. Thank you.
Thank you. We know that the pro forma has a lot of information out there, so if you don't have immediate questions right now, we know the whole thing was sent out to everybody and we do look forward to continuing these conversations. Member Marsette, you have your hand raised.
Yes, I just have a comment. You know, with the deficit that we're looking at, I just want to remind individuals that, you know, cuts are going to be made, they're not going to be popular, we're going to try to reinvent programs like we did last year. Not everyone's going to be happy, but you can't have this kind of deficit and have it not affect departments or programs or anything like that. So, you know, just kind of a heads up for individuals knowing that this is what we're facing.
Thank you. Chair Rivera, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam President. So apparently, Mr. Whedleton is having some technological issues, but he would like to get in the queue.
He can, if he can join us, or Member Whedleton, Assemblymember Whedleton, you are welcome to ask a question.
Thanks. So can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
I'm not having technological issues, it's my computer is. So, you know, the, there's a budget deficit related because less students, so, but there must be huge decreases in costs too, right? I mean, you need less teachers because you have less students, is that correct? And how much would that help out?
We do have less teachers, but we've already accounted for those metrics-based adjustments, so we've reduced the number of teachers that would correspond to a lower student count. We've also reduced, at least initially, some other school staff in the administration that's metrics-based. It's, quite frankly, going from the Hold Harmless of 75% this year to 50%, you know, we're certainly going to have to make additional reductions and cuts throughout the district to be able to get that down to zero. And of course, by statute, we have to have a balanced budget. The one thing I would point out, though, this does not count or include, because we don't know what it will be, any additional federal stimulus that may very well change the situation we're in. Naturally, it would only be one-time money, so not good for the long haul, but anything we get will certainly be of assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Next up in the queue is Assemblymember Zalatell.
Thank you, Madam President. So when I go and talk with my constituents about this and we discuss this shortfall, can you boil it down into kind of the top highlights of what's driving this big of a deficit? As Mr. Whedleton highlighted, I think folks aren't going to necessarily put together that we are still, that the district's still going to run a deficit when there's already that metric taken into account, number of staff needed for students.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I can, also, Jim, I can add as well after you're finished.
Okay, we have an annual deficit every year just because of inflationary drivers. The state hasn't increased the base student allocation in quite a few years. So what that means is flat school funding at the same level of four or five years ago, every year there's automatically an inflationary gap that continues to increase and unless they either add additional one-time money on top or change the BSA at some point, we really are running about $10 to $12 million a year in normal inflationary costs and that's personnel costs, its supplies, its contracts, its fuel, maintenance, everything. So there's a 10 to 12 right off the top.
And in addition to that, if we think about, for lack of a better word, we continue to kind of kick the can down the road, this year's budget was brought to be a balanced budget by over $3 million in CARES money for the health teachers that we included, as well as $8 million approximately in fund balance to make ends meet, to not do layoffs last year. We had attempted to restructure some programs, continue to offer supports, but restructure and those efforts were not successful and what was voted on, the balanced budget included quite a bit of money, I would say, Jim, if you could correct me, it was about 6 to 8 million in fund balance just to make regular ends meet, as well as a little over 3 million for CARES money.
We used 8.33 million from the general fund and that was for Ignite Plus saving other staff and this year, we don't expect to have at the end of this year, the kind of fund balance that we've enjoyed for the last five to 10 years. So we assume for the purposes of pro forma that we're not going to have that. And then when you look at the CARES Act money, there was the roughly 3 million for health teachers, another 2 million for IT personnel, equipment, internet, and all those other costs that we are rolling forward, so it really quickly adds up to $28 million.
And by the time that, that was a good question, by the time that we present a budget back to the board, supporting the goals for which the board adopts and supporting those to, you know, move education forward in ASD, we'll have some suggestions about some reorganization again, but for several, several years, I would say about four years ago, we began with about a $4 million dip into reserves and we're able to make that up a little bit and we continue to move it to six and now we just keep growing, understanding that the pains of truly reducing and doing things different have been very difficult for us. But it's the increase of the costs in addition to the lack of, just, well, what the pro forma says, continuing to do everything that we've done the same way causes this and we just know that we need to make some adjustments in ASD unless additional revenue or new revenue from the state comes in.
Next up in the queue is Board Member Mitchell.
Yeah, and I just wanted to follow up on Assemblymember Whedleton's question because I think that's a logical way to approach it and Mr. Anderson and Dr. Bishop, you can correct me if I'm stating something wrong, but, you know, when we have a decline in students, unfortunately, if we could aggregate all of those into one building, then we could directly reduce the number of teachers that correspond with that number of students, but the fact is that it's spread out across the district. So it might be, you know, one less student in one classroom, three fewer students in another classroom and that doesn't translate into, you know, being able to reduce the number of teachers that you might think we'd be able to reduce by if we have 5,000 or 4,000 or 3,000 fewer students. In particular, if you look at a school like Inlet View where they already only have one classroom per grade, they're going to have what they have, whether they have 28 students in that class or 24 students in that class.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands raised in the queue. Like I mentioned before, we know that this topic is going to be big on all of our minds over the next few months as we work through all the numbers and the possibilities and the options and as it works through our board process and we do bring it back to the Assembly to, you know, have continued conversations as well in March. Next up in the agenda, I have some things that are listed on the agenda, but nothing really underneath them, capital improvement needs. We didn't have anything to present on our side. Chair Rivera, did you have any questions or comments from the Assembly side at all on this agenda item?
Thank you, Madam President. No, I do not believe we do.
And I'll ask the same question on F, on the comprehensive plan, again, we didn't have anything as well.
Same on our side.
Okay, all right. So, gee, the other matters of mutual concern, so item number one, the back-to-school update, that is something obviously big on everybody's minds, especially if you have children, and so I will go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Bishop for an update on where we are today.
Thank you, Madam President, and I'm going to request Dr. Stock go live. Mark Stock is the facilitator, the lead for the School Start Task Force and is going to update with the latest information in regard to movement when we can back into our school buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Good evening, everyone. So we have one slide, just to represent a graphic and I'll go through some of the basics. As Dr. Bishop mentioned, we are continuing to make refinements to the back-to-school start plan, continue to make small adjustments to simplify and try to bring it together. So what you're looking at here is just a graphic that attempts to represent that. Moving into the gray areas just represents status quo, we are currently in online instruction as everyone knows and our folks are busy doing that. While there are many, many programs that have started up with tutoring, small groups going on around the district, those are all continuing to populate at our schools. So we are serving lots of students individually through volunteer efforts, that's what the gray represents, our current online plus all the supplemental instructions currently ongoing. So the green represents a beginning of what we would call in-person school. And so we will begin with pre-K and II and our grade K through six self-contained special meets programs, as well as Whaley School. They will all begin in-person school, which will be a five-and-a-half-hour school day, most likely after we return from holiday break. The district makes announcements on the first and 15th of each month, so there may be a formal start date announced as early as next week on our normal 15th of the month, so that may be upcoming. We'll continue to monitor the development of the plans. Once K through two and K6 self-contained and Whaley gets started, grades three through six will continue with their current online and Zoom classes for a while. So that date, as far as moving to in-person, will be determined. We'll see how our COVID mitigation and transmission is going and how staffing levels are and we'll determine how quickly we can move grades three through six into return and to in-person school. Hopefully that will be as soon as we feel like we can do that and that's why we have a phased-in effort. We do want to build confidence with our faculties and our community with regards to how well we can do this safely. One of the unique things we noticed in the teacher survey, the AEA survey regarding how they feel about the safety plans in their buildings, the top-rated schools in the district were schools that were running tutoring programs in their schools, demonstrating that once we get people in the buildings and they get comfortable with the mitigation, our faculties respond by being confident in the plan. So we do know that we have some evidence behind our goals to get started. It's a little bit different for middle school and high school. So what you'll see there in the blue slides, you will see that middle school and high school would receive some new schedules, they will start small classes on the same time that pre-K2 and K6 self-contained get started, but these will be for selected students who are struggling with their grades and those students will be selected by each school and there will be unique class schedules created for those folks who will return to in-person schooling as well. Those classes will be smaller, that will allow them to get the extra support we need. One of the reasons for this, there's actually a couple, but one of the main ones is this will serve some of the equity issues that we're facing with regards to the unequal results and outcomes that we get with this type of online instruction. So our hope is that we will not have to have quite as extensive of a summer program and right now, with the numbers of Fs that we have, it would be a quite extensive summer program. So this would allow us to do some in-school remediation, get those kids, hopefully some of them, back on track for graduation and back on track with their grades. All other students who aren't selected for those small group support classes will continue for the time being with online and Zoom classes. So where you see fourth quarter, that's scheduled on our calendar for March 15th, our middle schools and high schools would then return to in-person schooling for the fourth quarter. One of the reasons for this small class third-quarter piece to this is that when you're running classes for credit with Carnegie units and all the normal things that go with high school credits towards graduation, it's really challenging to try to change all those classes in the middle of a nine-weeks period. So it's secondary's recommendation and we support that recommendation that we would make that move at a logical point where classes can be reconfigured for the fourth quarter. So that's the basics to how it works. We believe this plan will build competence and it will phase it in and all across the country, all across the nation, schools are making efforts to get our kids back and we believe that this is the time that we can do it and do it safely. So that's the back-to-school plan.
Thank you. Did any Assembly members or even school board members have any questions? or even school board members have any questions at this time? First one up, I see is Assembly Member Zalatell.
Thank you, Madam President. So a few questions about this. I appreciate the staggered start. How does this relate to the prior risk matrix? Or what's driving the particular decision points, particularly around that TBD? And what things can parents look for and the community look for that would be predictive of how we're moving toward, you know, accomplishing the school restart plan? I know that parents, employers, everyone's wants as much heads up as possible, and I appreciate the twice-month updates, but kind of wanting to know kind of how all the current pieces and this new piece all fit together to let us know what's coming up.
So thank you for the question. So part of the issue that we have with our students in our, in terms of how we handle the mitigation is to get, to start with the young ones and begin the process of transitioning so that the mitigation strategies can be practiced, as opposed to bringing back pre-K through six simultaneously being a challenge. So it has less to do with some specific number of a COVID cases of transmission. It has more to do with our abilities to successfully mitigate. And so as we build confidence in that, just like happened with our tutoring, we believe that we'll be able to demonstrate that. So this takes some of the pressure off the elementary principles, that they can start with the little ones, bring in pre-K six, and get that locked down so our mitigation is solid. So it has more to do with our preparation and our phase-in than it does a specific number with regards to COVID numbers in the community.
And just to add on to that, presently, 52 schools have some type of program operating right now in small scale, practicing those mitigation, you know, really returning those students whose parents would like some in-person, getting to know them in the classroom. I visited some schools today, and students are attending morning and afternoon sessions at different schools as well.
Next up in the queue is Chair Rivera.
Thank you, Madam President. So a couple of things before I get to my comments. So first is, wanted to note for the record, we've been joined by Assembly Member Crystal Kennedy. And then second, Assembly Member Weddleton also. There we go, he figured it out. So he wanted to get in the queue, but he figured out how to raise his hand. Thanks, John. All right, so my comment question, very similar along the lines of what Assembly Member Zalatell raised is. You know, I think this is a good graphical representation of what parents and the community writ large should expect. But I think for my part, it would be really helpful to have a better understanding of what's in between the lines that we aren't seeing here, and particularly when it comes to the different metrics and data points that the school district is using to inform these decisions. And in particular, and I think I've said this before, how the school district is working with the Anchorage Health Department? Because I understand, you know, all of this responsibility should be placed on the school district. I think we all come at that same level of understanding. So if that's the case, then what are some of the community factors that the school district has no control over, which the Anchorage Health Department could assist in? And how are we collaborating on those points? And I think for my part, especially as we get closer to January 16th, having more weekly report-outs to the community would be very helpful. I'm sure the administration would gladly work on you, work with you on getting those types of weekly reports out to the community. Because once you let the community know how we are doing on these metrics, the community, I'm sure, would be happy to help if we aren't meeting the metrics that we need to to go from phase zero to one. Then what can we do as a community? I think those types of informations is really helpful. So for me, better fleshing out a lot of that data would be really helpful from the constituents that I have heard and a lot of the parents that talk to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Rivera. That's a good point. I wanted to share that our website is up and running with information about our cases in ASD, just for that information so that that is accessible by the public. And in addition, we do meet weekly with the Anchorage Health Department, as well as the mayor and some of her staff. And we have designed a program that fits within the municipality's executive orders. And so we are really basing our decisions on our allowable use of buildings and facilities and mitigation and the best practices from the CDC.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Hildy.
Thanks. I just was wondering, for clarification, looking at the Level 1, 3 through 6 elementary, is that supposed to be blue? Like, and then you have TBD for Level 2? Maybe I'm just misreading it.
You are correct. That should be blue. 3 through 6 elementary, starting right there. And I apologize for that. That should be blue. That's on me.
No, you guys are working your tails off. Thank you. I just want to make sure.
But we changed the colors today because they were another color, and we were asked to make them blue instead, and I must have messed up the chart.
No worries.
Next up in the queue is Assembly Member LaFrance.
Thank you, President Michaelis. And thank you all so much for this discussion and information. I mean, this is a topic of, as we all know, tremendous concern to the community. And it's so important to get students safely back into the classroom. And I just wanted to, before I ask my question, just reiterate some of our previous conversations. I know that have been through email about, on the assembly side, we want to know, you know, any specific things and ways in which we can support the board and the district, and especially our kids in moving us forward and getting back to in-person school or whatever combination ends up being appropriate or however for our community. So my questions are about ventilation and air quality. And there are three. Would you be able to talk a little bit about what you've done to upgrade ventilation to return to face-to-face learning? That's the first one. And then could you also provide a breakdown of which schools have upgraded the ventilation? And then the final question is, are there details and data available to the public about what the air quality will be like for students returning? Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Tom Roth, our Chief Operations Officer, will handle that. We've done a brief to the board as well. Tom, are you available? We are dealing with the situation at the district office, the facility actually itself. So he might be off working through that. Can you ask your next question? And when he gets back online, we can have him answer ventilation questions.
Yes, we can sure do that. Next up in the queue would be Assembly Member Weddleton.
Well, thanks. You know, when you reopen, I imagine it won't be quite the same as it normally is. And I was thinking things like, you know, they say singing is bad for spreading, you know, contagious virus, and thinking band and sports and so on. I mean, so what's, what are we going to see when you start opening up?
Well, I can share right now. We have things open, and it's joyous, and it's amazing what's going on in our schools right now. Happy parents, happy kids. Joy from parents, actually tears of joy getting their kids back in. You know, the middle and high school are starting a little bit later. And so those types of things, such as the band and others, are kind of put off until March. But certainly, what's occurring in the building now is, you know, just a little bit different way that we do procedures. You know, we shared some information or some teachers did with us about kids, you know, want to hug and play and be close. And they just reteach those things that we've always taught to be good, such as they give the example of when someone drops, you know, something of their belongings, you know, usually someone else helps and picks up. And we're just reteaching what things in COVID and safety measures during COVID, we think, oh, but if that's not, you know, think about the safety during COVID and what we've learned. So what would be another way to show them that you care about them rather than picking up something? So we've just, in talking to teachers, it's really relearning different ways and different ways to understand, for kids to understand spacing. Of course, our youngest have, you know, they are the least prone, if you will, children under 10, that they're finding that have lower cases of the viral spread. But, you know, they're also the children that have the most difficulty in probably understanding spatial awareness. And so we're doing things such as the airplane arms, zombie arms, understanding how really they participate in class. And we, you know, it's amazing. And even in Assembly Member Weddleton, this fall, we had sports operating, which are very close contact. And we were having, starting skiing as well. And ALSA has worked with us to have mitigation techniques for sports as well. So even in the closest of contacts with children and just because of what we do, we follow the guidance on that and the mitigation, wearing masks and understanding all those. But I can certainly share with you. I've been in schools over the last couple of weeks, and it's amazing. What I was going to say is the teachers did share that the knowledge in young children doesn't translate from the, what they learn about spacing in the classroom. It takes a new lesson on the playground, and it takes a new lesson in the hallway. And so if you were to visit our schools, you'll see tape on the wall, little circles that they call sit spots, just to give the spacing that they go to those spots, and that allows us to assist them with the spacing. But for the parents and the children that choose to go, it is going to be a wonderful place to learn and grow. And we're excited to get started. I'm not sure if you've had any opportunity to visit daycares and other things that have been open or other schools. But while they're different, there's really this acceptance of, similar to how we go to the grocery store, that we still get to go, but it just looks different when we go because we have to ensure the safety of ourselves and others.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Marseth.
Yes, thank you. I just want to talk a little bit about going back to school. And I don't know if you've had the opportunity to talk with some of our students that have been testifying before the school board. But, you know, everything you read nationally, things that we're seeing here, and it has no reflection on teachers whatsoever. But our students are struggling. And the sooner we get them back into school, I mean, we have private schools operating. We have our small classrooms operating. There is no reason why we can't put kids back into school with the mediation that we have in place. And even though there may be some COVID, it's not coming from within the school district. And we are giving children options, parents options of whether they come or not. But I think as a board member, I can't stress enough how important it is to get our students back in school. And if you've not had an opportunity to go to our website and look at some of those videos of our kids in their classrooms and how happy they are and what they're sharing, they're just happy to be back, and they're learning. And that's what's important. This being out of school is going to have effects long-term for so many years. I mean, throughout the ages as these children get older. So I just want to stress that, as far as I'm concerned as a board member, and I also, I believe my understanding is between the first, second, and third, I know the third has a fourth quarter, but the second and third, that could be a matter of weeks, not necessarily months, to get that 3 to 6 elementary back in school. So thank you, Dr. Bishop, huge supporter of getting our kids back in school.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Assembly Member Perez Vridya.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for this meeting. And I have a few questions. But before I do, just want to continue and continue the sort of comments around how much we appreciate the work you're doing and how it's such a difficult job you have to try to navigate through this really complex and challenging time. So just much appreciation to all of you, both the administration and the board for all of the hard work you're doing. I guess I really have four questions. And they probably, most of them can go to the superintendent, but you can decide, I guess, actually. So the first one is just a sense of when we do come back, the plan when we have a positive case, just a sense of whether there is a plan in place so that all students don't get impacted, but there's a way to sort of manage that. The second question is getting a sense of what teachers are feeling as it relates to coming back. I've been hearing a lot from the community on both sides, both teachers wanting to come back, but also teachers feeling very concerned that they're at risk. Third question relates a little bit to Ms. Marseth's comments around learning loss. And I'm very concerned about the amount of learning loss that has occurred over the last year and sort of specific plans to address that. And then my fourth question is around transportation, specifically when we have these hybrid schedules and how families and parents are going to manage through the sort of non-traditional transportation necessary to get kids to and from school, whether it's through the bus or whether it's on their own. So those are my four questions. Thanks.
Sure. Thank you, and I'll do my best. I do want to share that we, from day one, have had response to cases. We have, in our programs, whether they be sports or otherwise, have had cases of COVID. And we do take precautionary measures in regard to stopping inactivity. And as you know, you know, it made the news. I don't know if you, your children are younger, but in the older world of the high school sports, we had to make some pretty critical decisions when we didn't know the exposure. So we err on the side of caution in regard to contact tracing. But ASD is a symptom-free environment. And so you could take, for instance, our classes that are going on right now in our schools. We have had symptomatic students or perhaps even students that are close contacts of a family member that ended up being positive. When we do see a symptom, the child is, does go to the nurse, get assessed, and in a separate area than the nurse's office because we want to keep children that go to the nurse for the reasons that we used to go, for, you know, skin needs and medication as a safe, clean environment. So we have some protocols of notification within a school about what happens. A lot of times, these are where the nurse actually goes to the classroom. We have mobile nursing stations and can assess We have mobile nursing stations and can assess and have basically quarantine areas. And then we follow through with not only contacting the parents, but we also do the close contacts of the classroom. And generally, for schools, in our research, what we have found is that older kids, and we're not, such as our high school kids that we have, really are in groups, and they stay in those groups daily. So when we had sports teams, things like that, we could really understand that grouping. In some of our other programs where they're younger children, if they're around and about in the classroom, we might have, you know, maybe 12 kids that we could say, oh, that child might have been a close contact over a certain amount of time. And I can certainly have Jen Patronis, our Director of Nursing, share additional protocols, but they're very solid. We've worked through them now about how we, the notification, the documentation that goes home, our follow-up with families, whether they are at the 10-day or two weeks in quarantine. What we found, though, is that probably, as you know, in our community, parents have different access. And because if someone is exhibiting symptoms, they have to be symptom-free for 24 hours, symptom-free, without a fever or anything before they can come back, which generally takes those two weeks. And we have found that our children of poverty don't have access to, sometimes not even a car, to go through a drive-through testing, nor do they really have, you know, sometimes finances or understanding about doing that. Because, as you know, we live in Alaska, and when kids play outside, you know, sometimes the sniffles may not be COVID. But if a runny nose is part of those symptoms, we have to address it. So what we have done is worked with the state as well as the Anchorage Health Department, and we have, right now, the two Abbott ID Now machines where we have placed them in our elementary schools. We're looking at supplying all title elementary schools, all 26 of them, working with the team at the state level to do so. So we are getting that done and able to test so that a child doesn't have to sit home, because that's what we have found from some of our parents. So very, very tight on understanding where kids are. The classrooms are actually set up for that mitigation and that knowledge of who is around each other for how long, when they're, when they aren't six feet apart, was there other mitigation, like screens such as you would see in a store? Or obviously, we all wear masks. We definitely have a rule of staff and students, everyone who enters the building wearing a mask. You are correct, and the teachers, we have teachers that email the board, I'm ready to go back, let's get me back. And we have some that email the board and share, I'm reticent to go back, I don't want to go back. And Dr. Stock mentioned a survey that AEA did of its own members, and we were delighted to see that of the schools that actually did go back, their confidence in their building and their building's knowledge around the virus and their safety were the highest of all of our schools that took the survey. Those that did not have their mitigation plans turned in, they were the least knowledgeable about that. So we understand that this is a process, and we're moving our staff through it to feel confident in building those plans within the schools under a standard of operation that we have and build, you know, participate in the building of those plans at each school so they have a very in-depth understanding about what we can and can't do. With research, we follow it all the time. It's very similar to hospitals and other medical facilities that generally we're not, from the people we work with and the people we serve, we're not really transmitting the virus. The majority of virus spread is in social settings, and we found that for sure at our schools as well, that when we do keep our guard down, because these two people work in my room with me and we had lunch together, that those are the times that we find where we just let our guard down. And we've had that happen in some schools where we've had multiple people, adults be close contacts of others, when someone comes down with a case from their spouse or someone that they were around outside. So it is varied, probably as varied as really people in our community feel about what they'd like to do and how they're shopping or not shopping, similar to that. Tremendous learning loss, Dr. Stock talked about. We have an uptick in our Ds and Fs. We are organizing around equity of outcomes and equity of access during third quarter to really engage with students who have been underserved over the last three semesters or three quarters, really, starting from last spring. At the elementary level, it's not about grades and credits, though, and actual course content. It is more about those learning skills. And right now, there's a massive research going on, about 15, they're paying attention to our 15 million kids across our country in K through 2, and the estimate is that about 15% of what any other year aggregate of what kids learn, the entire group will learn 15% more. And so we know that those on marginalized sometimes in our community are those that suffer the most. So we are very just, you know, we are trying to work around understanding that, and our programs now really service the majority of our students who have been understaffed, who are, they might be logging on to Zoom, but they're not making progress. So many of our children are not home with a mom and dad to do Zoom. Sometimes it's an older brother and sister who happens to be on his or her Zoom or using the computer right now. So while we even might have students logged on, it's very difficult to keep them engaged and see that progress. So the overall thought across the country is that there'll be that loss overall. But again, when that happens in K2, which are building blocks, that is going to be generational into the future. That loss is going to stay with that student for quite some time, because what we know about learning those skills, the skills are learned, you learn to read to read to learn, and so the impacts are great. Doesn't mean that kids are going to be non-readers, it means that the access that they have and the ability is going to be stalled, is what the research is sharing, for the majority, for the aggregate. But as you and I know, your experience from being on the school board, that there are many, many students who will struggle the rest of their school and perhaps not graduate due to this loss right now of not understanding. The school I visited today that was working on, they had kindergarten students in, they were able to talk the parent into allowing their first grader, who is not logging on to her, to come back and learning kindergarten as well, to really work with families. Our teachers are doing a tremendous job of trying to figure it out, family by family, what's the most that they can do. This school, the teachers go with the principal, and they walk in their neighborhood to pick the child up, to walk the child to school. Many times, if they're in a walking school, and they just shared the story with me. That brings us to transportation. And I want to share, great success. There are zero cases spread in the Matt Sue Valley who have been busing from day one of COVID, zero transmission on school buses. So what we feared some of the most has not come to fruition, and our buses will be operating on their normal system once we get the large groups of moving to phasing in, we'll have those regular bus. Again, students have to have a mask when they enter the bus, they, you know, bus driver helps them squirt a little sanitation on, they wipe their hands, they sit down, they fill up the back of the bus first. As they get off the bus, same thing, put, you know, sanitation on their hands, and they disembark from the front. And so we have worked with others on the procedures there. But even after a full year, talking to the transportation experts in Matt Sue and the evidence with their superintendent, they have, they have found out that a child was positive who had ridden the bus, you know, several times over, as they trace their COVID cases. But absolutely, no one on buses have really become sick due to that. So I believe that, as you know, buses don't, most of, majority don't have seat belts, so they're really high for most of the children that ride them, they can't actually see over the bus. See, so I know I've touched briefly, talked a lot, but hope that gives you a mind's eye of our confidence that we know we can have school, we can have school safely, we can welcome our children back and protect our staff and students in doing so. Of course, it's not going to be full scale, of course, it's not going to be what it used to be, and I don't believe it ever will be again, with understanding all that we know and what we have learned through this time. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up in the queue, Assemblymember Zalatell.
Thank you, Madam President. I had two follow-up questions. I took a minute to go look at the, I guess I'll call it the COVID-19 dashboard or the ASD COVID-19 summary, and it shows that, you know, the active confirmed cases and total confirmed cases. My, one of my questions is, is that accounting for employees only or employees and students? And is there any plan to break out those numbers, just so that we know if those are adults or children who have tested COVID positive for ASD? My second question or follow-up is, I thought in response to my question and Mr. Rivera's, my understanding from the responses were that the community transmission rate is really not a factor to the school reopening at this point. You guys have a plan that you plan to go forward with, and that community transmission rates and kind of the effect of the community, that you've made a plan that's outside of that, was that a correct impression?
No, not necessarily, Member Zalatell. We're going to move forward, given the opportunity to follow the emergency ordinances that are provided and understanding about the pre-K2 viral spread in schools and the success of large school districts in densely populated areas as well as others, in working with kids in the most needs. I would say that the community spread is somewhat why we're holding off on our older students who do have more, more movement within a school, less of an ability for us to work through those mitigation and understanding and kind of building muscle. So where we know that we can be successful, we're paying attention to that and understanding the community spread is high, but the need for learning is also high for those young students and using the science behind that. So I wouldn't say it's all or nothing, but I would like to share that understanding K2, pre-K2 and their needs, and our ability to mitigate, really through elementary school and the way that elementary schools operate with less movement of children, among others, among the hallways, that we can safely operate with that. And so that was one, and then the, we do have the dashboard, and it's a great time that Tom Roth is back up. Again, we were addressing an issue that occurred at the district office, an emergency issue, so he was offline dealing with that. He's back, he can talk to Member LaFrance's comment as well as yours, Member Zalatell, for both ventilation and our dashboard in regard to students and staff. Tom Roth?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And I can, I can address the question about the numbers. My regrets, I was not up for a Member LaFrance's question, but I'm happy to entertain it and respond. So with regards to the numbers on the district page, those are inclusive numbers, both adults and students. And to provide some context, they're based on reports that the district receives, we have an automated system, you know, whereby schools can report cases, and they're either confirmed, positive, close contacts of confirmed positives or symptomatic. And to build muscle memory, what we've asked schools to do is just to report what is often informed, or they are informed of by parents and by staff and by students. Right now, we have no intention to break those out, adult and students. And just a couple, a couple of reasons for that. First, the, these are modeled, you know, what we're doing is modeled off other school districts, and we've not seen examples where districts have broken out adults and students. We did discuss it, we think it is a bit of a privacy matter, potentially, so we've elected to simply demonstrate the numbers. So if I might defer to Assemblymember France, if you could repeat your question concerning ventilation.
Thanks, sure, I would be happy to. So the question has three parts. The first, what has ASD done to upgrade ventilation for return to face-to-face learning? The second, would you provide a breakdown of which schools have upgraded ventilation? And the third part, are there details and data available to the public about what the air quality will be like for students returning? Thank you.
So with regards to the ventilation system in buildings, and I'll try not to make this too lengthy, but I think most, everyone's probably cognizant that, you know, the ventilation system is something, it is designed, it is specific to the building, it is engineered to meet the requirements for air movement inside of buildings. And as everyone is aware, you know, we've got schools that were built in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s, and ventilation systems, the HVAC systems have been upgraded in those older schools over the years. So to answer your specific question, you know, our, all of our school ventilation systems are under a centralized management system, a DDC system. And they all work. If they don't, we know about it, and we respond to it. And they, and they move air as they were designed to move by the, by the original specifications of the system. In terms of upgrades, we have not done any specific upgrades to any of our HVAC systems. It really, it, 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 there's no need. What we have done to increase the amount of airflow in the buildings over time is, we are running them two hours earlier in the day, and we're running them two hours later in the afternoons to ensure that the air that is in the building is circulated, and our buildings circulate air at a frequency that, that is compliant with, with, you know, with all building code standards. We change our filters semi-annually, there's been some discussion about replacing those filters with HIPAA filters, but again, it goes back to the design aspect of all your HVAC systems. HIPAA filters, they're, they're, they're great, but you can't, you can't use them in, in heating systems that are not designed to have that type of, of airflow resistance. In fact, what you're doing is you're defeating the purpose of the ventilation system to push air by having a filter that is too dense to allow the, the movement of air through the building. So we've not done any upgrades. They, they work fine. Again, if they don't work, we repair them and we maintain them consistently. So with regards to the details for air quality, I guess I'm a little bit confused what specifically people are asking for outside of what I've described. We can certainly address them a case by case if there are specific concerns in a given building. But again, I'm not, I'm not aware of any particular shortcomings in the heating and ventilation systems. So I hope that is a response, sufficient response to your question.
President Vekalis, may I go ahead and ask a short follow-up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you for that information, Mr. Roth. And I guess to that latter part about air quality, I know that there are some places, and maybe they don't have the same level of HVAC, for example, that open the windows throughout the day for students. And I'm hoping we won't have to do that through winter here. I know that isn't, you know, isn't ideal, but that was one issue that came up. There are also some places, for example, I think gyms that have used like CO2 detectors as an indication, I guess it can correlate with viral load in the air, like when people are exhaling, to give an idea of when there needs to be more airflow. So that's, you know, some of the, some of the questions that have come up with that piece of it. And thank you, though, for talking through the HVAC system and how that works to meet those requirements.
So if I might, I mean, what I would, I'd be happy to offer, if anybody has any, any specific or particular questions about their school, whether it's a staff member or a parent, I am happy to connect that individual with Mr. Darren Hargraves, who is my Senior Director for Maintenance and Operations, and, you know, we're happy to go through that stuff. But when you're, when you're talking about 80, 85-plus schools, it's just, it's very difficult to kind of enter in those kinds of discussions when, you know, again, if we know there are issues with, with a specific system that it's dealt with, that they're functioning the way they're designed to function.
Next up in the queue, I have, yes, next up in the queue, and the last hand that I see raised on this topic is Board Member Donnelly.
Thank you, President Vekalis. I remain concerned that the current one-hour minimum of instruction four days a week is simply inadequate. I was hoping by this point of time in the year, our instructors would be sophisticated enough with delivery, remote delivery, to be able to increase that amount of time. And even if we go to five days a week, that's only five hours a week of direct instruction is a minimum. And I realize that there's a lot of great teachers out there doing more than that, and God bless them. But as a minimum, we need to have solid minimum expectations from our instructors, and I don't think four or five hours a week is anywhere close to what our kids need. And I think the key to getting our students back into the classrooms is getting our instructors back into the classrooms. That's why I have advocated that January 4th should be the default for teachers being back in their classrooms. I think that that should be the rule rather, rather than the exception. And of course, there's going to be exceptions for any necessary quarantine protocols or any specific health concerns. any specific health concerns. But in general, I think our students and our community would be much better served by our teachers being back in their classrooms on the 4th to be able to prepare for getting our kids back in the classrooms sooner and more effectively. I recognize there could be exceptions to that, but I think waiting until the 19th to get our kids back, our little guys back into these classrooms is just waiting too long.
Thank you for your comments and thank you to everybody for asking questions and making comments that are very timely and very relevant to all of the hard work that is going on in our community and definitely in our district. At this time, I'm not seeing any other hands up in the queue, so we'll go ahead and move on to our next topic. Item number two, which is the ASD strategic planning. And we just wanted to take an opportunity to update the assembly on kind of what we have done and where we are. So first up, and I will ask member Marsete to also help me with this as we kind of go through all of this. As most of you know, over the last, you know, year plus, we have been working on our transition from destination 2020 into what's next for our children. What started out as a five-year plan, we kind of talked as a board about making it a six-year plan with this pandemic wiggle window kind of upfront. And so we've stretched it out to extend through 2026. As you can see on the screen, we have a website set up on the, or a page set up on our ASD website for all of the community. And you can see the website address down there on the bottom to go in and to look at our goals and our guardrails and to help give more feedback in their own time. So whether they've been able to attend one of our forums or a community council, we're trying to reach out to as broad of our community as possible to get their thoughts, their questions, their feedback on our goals and our guardrails as we are trying to lay out this plan for our children going forward. So right up on, next you see our draft board goals. We have limited them to three goals. And with every goal, there is an interim goal that will be modified and adjusted as we go through the years going forward, but it really is getting down, you know, to the basics. The first one, which is a big one, our reading proficiency. We want all of our third grade students, 80% of them by May of 2026, to be proficient in reading. And we want to go from 40% to 80%. We realize that is a big goal, but we are all committed to working through our efforts to make that happen. Goal number two would be our math proficiency, moving our students in grades three through nine from 40% to 55% by May of 2026. And then the third one, getting into our older students, one of the biggest points of feedback that we got in the beginning of the process is making sure that our older students, when they graduate, they are ready for life. So life, college and career ready. It's not to pinpoint, you know, one direction or another, but to help them find their path and grow and get some of those major underpinnings before they leave our school, to be ready to be those awesome community members that we all want them to be. And so those are our three draft board goals as they are written right now. And then we have our guardrails. And, you know, our guardrails kind of are written in a, you know, what we won't do kind of a thing. And as you can see on the bottom there, the four of them, you know, one of them, which, you know, talks about equity, the superintendent will not leave our student groups underrepresented in our lottery and application-based programs. And I know we've talked about this one before. We'd have to make some pretty significant district changes to make that happen, but it's an equity thing. And then number two, will not operate without a diverse and culturally responsive workforce. It is so important that we work and we strive to get a staff that, you know, more represents our student body so those connections can be made. And then, you know, we can work with our students, you know, where they are and where they're coming from. Number three, not allow unsatisfactory employee performance to go unidentified or unaddressed. That's a pretty easy one. And then number four, the superintendent will not operate elementary schools without a mental health service. And that can come in many different forms, but now more than ever, we know how important mental health is, you know, for all of our kids. And so we're trying to dig down deeper, our high schools and our middle schools have had counselors in some capacity. We're trying to make sure our littles have that as well. And so next slide, community input. I wanted to turn this over to member Marsete, if she would, and just kind of talk about some of our process to kind of how we got here briefly and some of the town halls that we've had and how our community can continue to join the conversation. I know that we are looking, we've done a first reading on our draft goals and guardrails, our second and potentially final one would come up at our next board meeting, I believe that's the 15th. And so we're trying to get as much community input as possible by the end of this week so that we, you know, as a board can make our best, most informed decision for our community going forward. And so, Star, if you wanted to talk about kind of where we are with some of that process, that would be wonderful.
Sure, thank you. We have been, we met with, we had an online Zoom with the Black Caucus last night talking about goals and guardrails. We had our first town hall meeting, which we had a great participation rate. I think it was around 80 or more, definitely answering questions. Those questions and answers have been documented on our website. We've put out surveys out there. There's just been, our steering committee that worked with us in the beginning on this has reached out to their groups or work groups or whoever they're associated with. We created a flyer that has a QR code on there that you can go right to the survey and answer that. So we've been challenged a little bit with this pandemic, but we've certainly tried to reach out and get as much community feedback as we can on the goals and guardrails that we put forward, but knowing that those goals and guardrails were from the public and what we heard from our community, parents, students. And that's what we focused, those drafts all around. So important to get it back. We will be voting on it. The other thing that is important to note that is with these goals and guardrails, our budget, those are our priorities for our budget. And so those are the things we'll be focusing on as a board to support in the budget process to keep it focused on what we want our goals to achieve.
Thank you. And I believe our next town hall meeting for the community is this Wednesday. And I don't have the time right handy, but I do know that it is coming up and it's a Zoom meeting and.
Six to seven.
Six to seven, as many folks that want to attend and join the conversation as possible. Next up in the queue, or first up, I have Assemblymember Zalatell.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a few questions about the first two slides you shared. I appreciate the reading and math and readiness goal. I think those are fantastic goals. I am curious why it's relying on Goals One and Two on the state test peaks and not maybe a, some kind of conglomeration of multiple assessment periods throughout the year, particularly for our elementary-age students. It seems like putting all of the eggs in one basket if it's looking at a particular assessment. And I know as a parent, my kiddo goes through a lot of assessments throughout the year, so it's just a little bit of feedback and I don't, maybe that's an impossibility. The other was observation or question about the guardrails is, I see some really specific guidance and directives to the superintendent. To what extent do those strategic guardrails apply to the board and the board's action around possibly creating policy that supports these guardrails for the superintendent? This first one, you know, when we say will not leave students, student groups underrepresented in lottery application-based programs, I think that's a really complex statement that has many layers, that probably has multiple players who need to take certain actions. So I just wanted to know kind of what's that interaction because these are all phrased as the superintendent will or will not statement, so I didn't know how those interact.
So to address your second question, first the guardrail side of it, there is absolutely no doubt that as we go through these, once these are final and approved, we very well may have to go back to policy and see if anything is in conflict with that. And certainly if it is, then that's something that we will have to do as a board is to change our policy. Some of it, you know, to number one, you know, might be more of an operations, you know, side and how resources or some of the ARs are kind of done on the management side of things. And so it's going to be a very collaborative process, but there is no doubt that if there is a policy that needs to be changed to make any of these guardrails work, then that's exactly what we, you know, would do as a board. And Dr. Bishop, if you wanted to talk about the Y1 test question that you started with.
Absolutely. And that's a great question. And to let you know that each of these goals will come with interim goals. So these are SMART goals written with a set time, students, and how we're going to know whether we met the goal or not. To support that, the peaks were chosen because that's the assessment that really is the federally approved assessment through ESSA. It's well-known, it can be interpolated with other states, other districts within our state, so it's just more globally known. And so, in fact, that's kind of our report card, if you will, the state's report card for schools is based on that and it's federally driven. So that is just at the 30,000-foot view. But in order to reach that goal, the district is certainly going to have to use smaller, more interim assessments to understand learning and to be able to act on what a child has learned or hasn't learned, to address it. Teachers are very proficient in using curriculum-based measures to alter their instruction. And so the interim goals that fall underneath these that member Marsete talked about, there's, with the reading proficiency, there's three smaller goals on how we're going to get there in those six years. Those would use those more frequent assessments for that. But to the ultimate goal for the board to really understand how we met our mark, we're utilizing the data that is very, very public, driven at the state and federal level, and actually is used for the district and school report cards.
Next up in the queue, member Marsete.
Yeah, if I can just add too, you know, as you're looking at these, this is just another step in the process. The next process, once the board adopts these goals and guardrails, is for it to go back to the superintendent and her staff. And what they'll bring forward to us is objectives or strategies and how their team is going to meet the board's adopted goals and guardrails. So there's still another part of this that hasn't been developed yet, although there's been some, certainly some interim goals that you'll see here, but without the numbers because that is what the staff is going to go back. They're going to figure out how they can support us in these goals and guardrails, and that's what they'll be presenting us later on next year so that we can finalize it and adopt them for our next school year.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to respond to Ms. Zalatell's question, which I think is an excellent question because it does us, it's only 50% of our job to hold the superintendent accountable. We've got to hold ourselves accountable as well. And I think I agree with President Vakalis regarding changing policy, but we also have to create policy around which we will, we will continue to do the work, this work that we're calling equity. And so new policy, making sure that all, that we are looking at things using the same language, or at least a common language. And most importantly, we are, you know, funding and providing resources where they are needed. And so that is going to help the superintendent when she develops those interim guardrails. It's going to help the board stay focused on how we are allocating our funding and our resources. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other hands raised in the queue, but just, you know, reaching out to all assembly members and board members to make sure everybody knows about our town hall that's coming up on Wednesday and knowing that we are hoping to pass these final goals and guardrails at our next meeting, which is on the 15th. And so all of the feedback that we can get, but, you know, as member Marsete said, this is just a first step. You know, there's going to be, you know, much more that follows on after this and we still welcome the community participation, certainly as we go forward. Next up in the agenda, item number G3, the election and number of school board members. This was kind of put on as a discussion point. We have seen, I know I have seen Chair Rivera has seen a few emails regarding how our school board member seats are, whether we are district-wide, whether we are broken out, maybe similar to the assembly, whether we want seven members or 11 members. And if any between the two bodies have any thoughts or, you know, questions on something like that, this was just a placeholder to have a discussion. And I do see Assemblymember Weddleton's hand up. You may go first, sir.
Sure. And I'd ask to put this on there, but I think like you said, we've got some emails and other people, and it's kind of been the arena. But this was also something that we had, some of us had discussed as part of the discussion when we were preparing to change the assembly to 12 members, which was on the ballot this year and will be instituted after the redistricting from the census. And I know it's been a discussion over time periodically at some level with the school board too. So if it is something to be done, now is the time to do it so it could get on the ballot if that's necessary to make the change and then also start planning for when it would kick in, which could, would likely be two years from now, you know, probably 22 or something like that. And I just, I don't know, I didn't want to make it a big, long issue, but if you had some thoughts, is this something you discussed? Is it like, yes, you did, then it'll never happen or it's kind of maybe established report on various thoughts on it? Thanks.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, I see member Marsete.
Yes, I know this has been brought up in conversation before, but I am against having board members run for certain districts. And the reason I am is I was on the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, and at that time, we were appointed by representing school areas, different organizations, and we really, really had a difficult time advocating for students at large. It just seemed like everybody had their own priority and were focused on that and it was harder to come together. With it being at large, I think the focus is really on the kids overall and not just on one area. And so my vote, or my thought anyway, is to keep it as is.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I wondered what the thought was behind this particular item, but, you know, I'm not against having more board members, but no matter how many board members we have, our kids deserve to have every single one of them, working for each of them every day, regardless of their zip code. And so if we are, whether we add more or not add more, I think it hasn't really been that long ago that we moved to this, to this citywide election of school board members. I remember when it used to be district elections and, and the louder voices, the more affluent voices were the ones that got heard. And I know that that's not something we really like to think about, but that is exactly what happened. So this city voted to do a citywide election. So it hasn't been that long ago. I don't even think it's been 20 years. I remember the day that it happened. So I'm not again, I'm for more voices, but I am not for, I would be really hesitant to move something as important as the education of all of our children to districts to determine. We're just going to fight over who's going to get what. Whereas right now, the way it's set up, we are for every kid, no matter where they live in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Board Member Donnelly. Thank you. Next up in the queue, board member Donley.
Thank you. You know, I think about 95% of what we do as a board has nothing to do with where we live. There's a capital dollars, I suppose, could lead that way, but we have a very strong priority process that's objective, done by our professionals that come before us and give us those priorities. Constitutionally, I think the, you know, the legislature has single-member seats. And I think that's been very, very positive for Alaska. I think it's very challenging for ordinary citizens to run a citywide election for a school board seat. And, you know, even if they were, even the, even the Assembly districts are bigger than Senate districts now, I think. But, so even those are challenging how big they are. But I think the best government is the closest to the people. And having citywide elections takes the board away from being more directly close to the people because it's impossible, it's bad enough it's in April, but then it's also impossible to ever go door-to-door for the entire municipality of Anchorage. So that really lends against many folks being able to successfully run for office, especially for the school board. Further, I do agree that additional board members could be a very valuable asset for minority communities to have a better chance to get additional representation on the board. A more diverse board could be, would be facilitated, I think, by some additional seats. So I think that has proven advantageous in other communities that have gone that way. So I actually, I do support the concept of the, the school board paralleling the Assembly. And that would also build teamwork, I think, to a greater degree between the Assembly members and the school board members as they would have smaller constituencies that they could really work with. I co-chaired the Anchorage Legislative Caucus three times. It was, as we all know, a little bit like herding cats, but we always got together. And when there was issues about capital dollars, we worked as a team to prioritize those and get the best outcome for the city as a whole and not for any one district. It was part of what we did and we just, we learned how to do that. And I think that's part of what we can do also. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, board member Hildy.
Thanks. So I haven't looked at this for maybe like a year and a half or two years. But when I did look it up, if you have single-member districts versus at-large for school board, student outcomes are lower for single-member districts, but maybe not substantially lower. It's been a while since I looked at it. So I know other places have done a combination where you have some at-large and some district. I think the comments on people knowing who their representatives are is really important. Having more seats, I guess, I have no opinion on, but my biggest issue is like we got tons of heavy lifts right now. And if I don't have something that is going to substantially improve educational outcomes for kids, I don't know that we have the bandwidth as a community or as a board to be focusing on that. So while, you know, it's kind of one of those things you may put in the queue of things to look at, I don't see it as a priority because I don't see any correlation to improving student learning from it. But not a no, I just don't see it as a priority right now.
Next up in the queue, Chair Rivera.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so I think for my part, I appreciate Assembly member Weddleton bringing this up for discussion at this meeting. For me, I would want to ensure that, you know, if this is a direction that the school board was interested in going, that the top priority, much like what school board member Hildy just stated, is on governance and policy and how those are effectuated in the schools and how that could help improve student outcomes. That's, I think, a top priority for me. If increasing the number of school board members helps that, then that's a worthy discussion to have. If it doesn't help that, then maybe table it for later. But for my part, I'm not going to weigh in too much at the at-large versus district discussion. I think that is a discussion that school board members likely have a much better knowledge of and much more informed opinion of. And, you know, I think either way, I think there's going to be some positives and some negatives no matter how you look at it. And then last, just responding a little bit to a previous comment made by school board member Donley. You know, I think regardless of whether additional school board seats are added to the body or not, I don't think that by itself is going to automatically make the school board member look more like its community. I think it needs to be much more intentional than just adding seats to a body. I think you have to look at a variety of other factors like pay, like childcare. I mean, there's so many other factors that need to go into it other than just adding people to a body that will really ensure that the, that all of our elected bodies, all of our governing bodies look and reflect the people who we serve. Thank you, Madam President.
Next up in the queue, Assembly member Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. You know, I guess having come from the perspective of having been a former school board member and now being on the Assembly, I will say that what I, when I was a school board member, I did not like the idea of there being anything other than area-wide school board members. However, being on a little different arrangement now, I absolutely recognize the value of representing a given area that you're very familiar with. One of the things that was mentioned was talking about the Capital Improvement Committee. I served on that before I was a school board member. And it was always a very spirited conversation about whose needs would outweigh somebody else's. But at the end of the day, we all recognized that we had to do things that worked for the good of the district. And sometimes people recognize that they wouldn't be on the bond this year, but they would next year. And everybody would agree to support that next year or two years, three years down the road, or whatever. But the kind of collaboration that had to occur, because people were representing their specific areas, I thought had great value. I do know there was a time when there was no one from Chigayak Eagle River that represented any of the children out here on the school, school board. And that was problematic. And there were times when we basically felt like there just wasn't anybody that knew us well enough to be able to represent us. And I think that's what the major value is, is that when you know the community that you're from, you're better able to represent them. And it doesn't mean that you ignore everybody else. It just means that you're able to bring a perspective to the table that other people just won't have. And I remember, you know, back probably 20 years ago or so, there were several members from the, on the school board that were all from the same community. In fact, literally lived just blocks within each other. Yet there was other sides of the entire municipality that had no representation at all. And you just lose perspective that way because you don't have anybody to bring that closer-to-home perspective. So I would hope that the conversation would really continue. Not that this has to be decided right now and not that I necessarily think that we need more school board members, but I do think there is value to recognizing that, you know, we're a diverse enough community in a lot of different areas of the municipality that we ought to be able to, to truly represent the areas that we know better than other areas of the community. So again, I just hope that this conversation actually continues. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up in the queues, Assembly member Zalatell.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate everyone's comments, and I don't think this is an easy thing to resolve. However, I would like to offer perhaps an interim step that I understand school board members are assigned to community councils on a rotating basis. It would be fantastic if we could get notification of which members are assigned to which community councils. That would provide an opportunity for collaboration within those areas, flagging issues for each other. We may have heard in the community council area. So it's something I would like to suggest. I know we, I start to learn after one or two meetings which school board member is with each community council. But as you all do, serve many community councils, sometimes it's hard to keep track. So however we can help or I can help facilitate that coordination, I'd very much like to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And she doesn't have to respond right now, but I'll ask our board secretary Katie to please send out our current list. When we do our board reorganization every spring for our officers and such, we also do it for our community councils. And so we can get that out to the Assembly. It is posted on our website as well. But we'll make sure that that gets out for that purpose. Thank you for bringing that up. Not seeing any other hands in the queue and watching the clock. Next up, it says, "Munis presents a COVID-19 vaccination plan." I know we are all excited and gearing up for the next step in this pandemic. And so I don't know who from the municipality is going to present on this, so I will turn it over to whoever the speaker will be.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. And can you see my slides?
I do see slides.
Okay, perfect. So good evening, everybody. My name is Dana Lowdy, and I'll be presenting tonight with Stephen Johnson, the Medical Countermeasures Branch Director here at the EOC. As of this week, my role is as the Deputy Medical Countermeasures Branch Director under Steve. We also have on the line Manch Garhart, who's our vaccine group distributor, or vaccine group supervisor, and Audrey Gray, our Public Information Officer. So many of you are likely aware that the COVID-19 vaccine will be rolled out in a phased approach. Sorry, I just got... Is it taking up the full screen now? Okay, great. So many of you are aware likely that the COVID-19 vaccine will be rolled out in a phased approach. That's illustrated on this slide. So the phases I'll be referring to refer to the levels of vaccine availability. So right now, we have no vaccine. And eventually, we'll move through Phase 1, Phase 2, and in Phase 3, vaccine will be widely available. And as a reminder, there are multiple vaccine candidates. As of right now, almost all of which require a booster shot. And all have varying temperature storage requirements, which adds to the complexity of this effort. But for this presentation, we're going to focus on a high-level overview. So back in June, the Anchorage Health Department began reviewing their medical countermeasures dispensing plan to prepare for the vaccine. In August, Steve Johnson joined the EOC to continue planning. In mid-September, CDC released its initial planning guidance for jurisdictions. And by mid-October, both the MOA and the State of Alaska had initial drafts of, of our COVID-19 vaccination plan. So we submitted ours to the state and the state submitted theirs to CDC. Also, in mid-October, we began meeting with the State of Alaska with a designated liaison from DHSS to help assist with our planning. And things really began heating up in the end of November when Pfizer applied for an emergency use authorization. So on December 1st, the CDC Group ASAP, which stands for the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, issued their Phase 1A recommendation to vaccinate healthcare personnel and long-term care facility residents. Two days later, last week, the Alaska Allocation Committee reviewed those recommendations from ASAP. And we found that they determined the initial sub-prioritization within that Phase 1A group. So where we are today, as of today, the EOC has an operationalized medical countermeasures branch staffed and putting plans in place and making this operational. Later this week, the FDA is going to meet to discuss the emergency use authorization for the Pfizer vaccine. And mid-December currently is the, is the soonest that vaccine could possibly arrive in Alaska. So that's sort of the lay of the land overall. Getting into the detail a little bit more, when vaccine does arrive, the bodies that determine who receives vaccine are the CDC and the State of Alaska. Those are the entities that make these determinations. So again, Phase 1A is actually the only group that ASAP has officially voted on and issued a recommendation for healthcare personnel and long-term care facility residents. And the Alaska Allocation Committee has reviewed those recommendations. And the only group that is, has been determined by the Alaska Allocation Committee is this top tier within Phase 1A. So it's a sub-priority group within Phase 1A. And they released that information today in a press release. And these illustrations are from ASAP, and they, they focus on the initial allocations. So in Phase 1B and 1C, we expect that essential workers or critical infrastructure, adults with high-risk medical conditions, and adults 65 and older will, will come online in terms of priority group activation. We don't know about the exact definitions or the order of those groups, but those are the groups that are being talked about most often. So that's the context. Another thing to keep in mind in the upper right is that vaccine will be shipped on a regular basis and phases might be slightly overlapping. So, you know, somebody in Phase 1B might possibly receive vaccine before all of Phase 1A is up. Okay, so that's who decides, you know, the priority groups. And now, to go into a bit more detail, I, on the slide here is the CDC and ASAP definitions for what they mean by healthcare personnel and long-term care facility residents. So paid and unpaid persons serving in healthcare settings that have the potential for direct or indirect exposure to patients or infectious materials. It's a pretty broad group. And the Alaska Allocation Committee's role is to further refine that definition and to apply the recommendation to Alaska. Long-term care facility residents are the other group that's been identified in Phase 1A by ASAP. That's, those facilities that provide a variety of services, both medical and personal care to people unable to live independently. So again, the Alaska Allocation Committee still needs to determine exactly what sub-priority groups will fall under Phase 1A. But as of today, they've announced the initial tier, the top-tier sub-priority group within Phase 1A. So the state has taken on the bulk of the planning for Phase 1A groups. In particular, the state's been directly planning with hospitals, who we know are going to be at the very front of the line in terms of the healthcare personnel that will be vaccinated first. They'll receive some of the first vaccine allotments, and they have plans to self-vaccinate. So other healthcare personnel who aren't hospital employees have a variety of pathways to, to receive vaccine. Pharmacies will be available for vaccination, as well as the Anchorage Neighborhood Health Center. And another pathway, the fourth item here, is provider enrollment. So what this is getting at is that if you are a healthcare provider, if you have your own clinic, you can enroll in the program and self-vaccinate. So an example of that kind of thing is actually in the municipality. We have some employees who are going to qualify under Phase 1A as healthcare personnel. And we have been coordinating and planning to, to vaccinate those employees by providing, sorry, by enrolling as a provider. And Steve will go into a bit more detail on that. So the other major group here is long-term care facility residents. And that's been facilitated by mostly a federal program through pharmacy partnerships. So the State of Alaska has, has really helped in, in making sure that local pharmacies partner with this federal program. Okay, Steve, are you on the line?
I'm good and ready to go. Once again, I am Steve Johnson. I'm with the Municipality of Anchorage's Emergency Operations Center. I am the Medical Countermeasures Branch Director. And I'll be giving you just a brief overview here in the, you know, hopefully have enough time to get through. I just want to reiterate that this time to get through. I just want to reiterate that this phase or this slide in particular I'm referring to is for Phase 1A, what Dana spoke about earlier. And this is, breaks down a little bit more of what we talk about when we, when it relates to us within the municipality. So when the Alaska Allocation Committee determines sub-priority groups within Phase 1A, some of those groups will be municipal employees, for example, frontline EMS, first responders working for the fire department, Anchorage School District nurses, and Health Department nurses who perform vaccines. We, the Muni has established partnerships with the Health Department, Fire Department, the School District, and the EOC to plan for these vaccinations with those eligible groups. Currently, right now, the Anchorage Health Department is enrolled in the COVID-19 vaccination program, and will be the orderer for vaccine for this, from the state. And the EOC will provide administrative and logistic support for that function. The group's eligible to receive vaccine will be, by definition, healthcare personnel, and will be able to self-vaccinate. So AFD will administer vaccine to all municipal fire departments, Health Department to its own staff, as well as Anchorage Safety Patrol, and Anchorage School District nurses to themselves, as well as any other subcontractors that may fall into that with the school district. Next slide, please. Thank you. So when we start planning down the road for Phase 1B, the populations for these phases, once again, has not been decided yet, nor the exact definitions offered to us yet. Both ASAP and the Alaska Allocation Committee will make those determinations. And even though we don't know who will be next, we are planning for multiple scenarios and building contracts with organizations who serve those populations outlined here. Next slide, please. So on this slide, once again, we're talking about Phase 1B. So I'll be talking briefly here about these four bullet points, identifying, estimating critical populations, evaluating our workforce capacity, vaccination, provider recruitment enrollment, and role of commercial and our federal partners. So identifying, estimating by reaching out to organizations that serve populations and asking about their plans to vaccinate and partnerships they've engaged. So that's something we're currently, you know, working to, to really to identify and figure out who this critical population is. The bullet 2, evaluating vaccination workforce capacity, is establishing our partnerships with those organizations I mentioned earlier, but that's fire, health department, police, and school district. And also coordinating with large healthcare providers on their public vaccination plans. So ensuring that they all have plans and are ready to implement those and get those ready. With the vaccine provider and recruitment enrollment, Operation Warp Speed made this the strategic decision to leverage the private sector, including pharmacies and private healthcare providers, to assist in vaccine dispensing. As part of that effort, the municipality has planned to direct outreach to medical professional associations to encourage clinics to enroll in this program. The municipality's role would be to help fill any sort of gaps that those, within those priorities that don't necessarily, or do slip through the cracks, so to speak, and focus our resources to strategically make sure that we help those populations receive the medications they need. With the role of commercial and federal partners, that is reaching out to our pharmacies, our current pharmacies within the municipality, determine their capacity to vaccinate other populations, not only in Phase 1A, but beyond Phase 1A. The next slide, please. So when we, when will Anchorage School District staff be vaccinated? Well, it all depends, really, when these definitions get fleshed out a little bit more. But AST nurses and healthcare personnel will fall under Phase 1A per Alaska Allocation Committee's decision today, that anyone performing vaccinations will be in the first tier sub-priority group within Phase 1A. So in other words, if we, well, I'm sorry, let me stay on task here. Other staff likely to be in Phase 1B as essential workers. And what we'll need, and I'll go to this in the next slide as well, school district to think about how to sub-prioritize their own staff, just like we've asked any other critical, critical infrastructure to do. And that's no different than the Health Department, the Fire Department, and the hospitals, to think about prioritizing, sub-prioritizing who they deem necessary to vaccinate. And a lot of that, if you've worked through your continuity of operations plan, and dusted those plans off and looked at those to figure, figure that out and help to prioritize those who cannot work from home initially, and who may fall in that category. Next slide, please. So what we need from you, well, to put it blunt, your school nurses, thank goodness you have a large capacity of school nurses that we could definitely put to work and help us through these phases and get out and possibly staff our strike teams and any sort of other mechanisms that we use to give vaccine out to people. Facilities and parking lots are definitely something that we could use. If you're familiar with the current testing that the municipality does with Visit Healthcare, we would envision doing something very similar to that with vaccine dispensing. We could also use possible help with not only vaccine administration, but the data management in on that. As you can imagine, with experimental use authorization for a vaccine, we want to keep a close eye on who's getting the vaccine, how they're reacting to the vaccine, and the follow-up for the, any sort of booster shot that is possible with that. And once again, for the Anchorage School District, we'll need them to go through, or you to go through, and really think about the sub-priority, priorities, sub-priority, your staff within the school district. We do have a couple of bullet points for the assembly. One of the biggest lifts, besides actually vaccinating people, is the public messaging and getting word out to the, to our people within the municipality, and educating them on what we're doing, and where to go, and what to do. We're also encouraging provider recruitment and enrollment for the COVID-19 vaccine enrollment through the state of Alaska. And we anticipate that this effort to begin this month and probably extend through at least June of 2021. And that is end of my report. Is there any questions that we can fill?
Before we get to the questions, thank you very much for that. This meeting was scheduled to end at 7:00. And at this time, if we want to continue, I would need a motion in a second to continue our conversation between some questions around this presentation, as well as member comments. And I do have five people that are signed up for public testimony, which was one of the things that we wanted to make space for in an evening meeting. I envisioned no more than 30 minutes if the bodies were willing to consider that. I'm not knowing what everybody else has on their timeline, but to continue, I need a first and a second.
I move to extend.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any opposition to extending 30 minutes? All right, not seeing any. Thank you very much to both bodies and to all of our participants in this conversation. The first hand up in the queue is Assembly Member Dunbar.
Thank you, Madam President. So I have one question for the staff that just gave their information, and then I have two questions for the school district in light of the presentation we just saw. So the first question is for, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson. So I was speaking with a police sergeant this weekend, and he was sort of speculating that in the conversations he's had, he thinks a lot of police officers are likely to not choose to take the vaccine. And I know, you know, a number of municipal employees might not. Thinking about the 1B group and the sort of limited number of vaccines that we have, how quickly can you move between groups in terms of people rejecting the vaccine? So if one group, you know, we're getting relatively few people there accepting the vaccine, and we plan for X number of vaccines in that group, how, how much time do you take before you say, okay, we need to shift these vaccines over to another group? Teachers, for example, or the school?
Yeah, no, that, that is an excellent question. And that, that is something that we've been trying to tease out as well. So for instance, that probably should have been another bullet point on here, is when we're figuring out our sub-prioritization and figuring out what groups are within each one of these first responders. One of the things that we've also been asking is to take a survey of those staff who you think fall into those categories, and what the likelihood is of those people that will take the vaccine to help, to help manage that waste of vaccine. And so when we talk about our first responders, our plan with our first responders, it will actually be the fire department that'll go in and administer vaccine for the police department. And when they do that, they will be, you know, making plans ahead, making sure that whatever, like if they go to a certain fire station, they have a pretty good idea who is going to be receiving that vaccine. And if it looks like there may be someone who doesn't at the time decide to have it for whatever reason, they'll have plans to mitigate that and to take, take advantage of that and not to waste the vaccine. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, it just sounds like it's pretty dynamic and perhaps difficult, but the more data we can, the more data that any, that every department or group can provide sort of an estimate, maybe based on a survey or something like that beforehand, the quicker you can redeploy those, those vaccines. I think it's going to be very important.
Oh, for sure. And you know, that's, that's one of the complexities of this as well, is just trying to figure that out. And when I was mentioning earlier about sharing the public messaging, the public education, that'll be a large part of that as well, is people's comfort with taking that vaccine, and how we get that message out, and how we do that.
Right. And so for the school district, anyone who feels they can answer these questions in light of this, I'm curious, first of all, so the Muni has enrolled as a provider, is my understanding from the presentation we just heard. I'm wondering if the school district has, or if they will. And we have that similar Vera clinic, I don't know if that plays into it, but I'd love to hear any plans there. And then the second question is, you know, when we're talking about sub-prioritization of employees, I stayed, I stated at the Health Policy Committee meeting, and I know a number of the school board members agree with me that as we are reopening school buildings to in-person schooling, that we should try to prioritize those teachers in getting the vaccine. That is, the teachers that we expect will have to be in person should be prioritized in getting the vaccine. And I guess I'm curious to hear if the school district agrees with that, and if so, what their sort of plans are in that, with that regard to sub-prioritization. Thank you.
I believe Tom Roth has been a big part of these conversations. I don't want to speak for Dr. Bishop, but I see Tom Roth has popped up on my screen here. Did you want to try and address some of those questions by Member Dunbar?
Yeah, to the President. And I'd also like Jennifer Vicalis, who is our Director of Health Services, to be online as well. So with regards to the first question, the district has applied and is able to receive and to disperse the vaccine. We did that several weeks back. In terms of priority, again, we're somewhat constrained, or we're, we're waiting on the same, same confirmation of prioritization that, that the rest of the city is. But we have submitted a survey, so we do know and will know the members of the district who want to take the vaccine, if the vaccine is available, we're prepared to, to receive and vaccinate our staff. We did have a conversation, I think it is, is a consensus, at least amongst the staff. We've not really brought it forward to Dr. Bishop, but we would certainly prioritize, you know, those, those individuals that we believe will be in, in school buildings at the earliest. If that answered your question. And Jennifer, if you're available to answer further questions as they come up with regards to nurses and preparedness to support.
Yes, and Tom, this is Dana. If also Jennifer could just share the work of the nurses and what would be available, because if we start school, nurses will also be working in schools.
All right, through the President, to the school board, and to the assembly, the nurses are prepared to give the COVID vaccine. We will prioritize the school nurses that are in face-to-face learning, because education is definitely the priority. They will continue with assisting their schools with the learning process. And then the nurses that will not go back to face-to-face learning right away, like the secondary nurses and some of our health treatment nurses, will definitely be available to give the vaccine. They have been learning a lot and going to all of the Thursday Echoes and gathering all the information they can so they can be prepared.
And Jennifer, if I might just, to remember Dunbar's question, Vera has been contacted, consulted, and recommended, asked to, to sign up, but to our knowledge at this point, they have not done so.
I just did receive knowledge, Tom, that Vera is registering as a provider to give the vaccines as well. And this is from Megan.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Assembly Member Allard.
Thank you. I guess I'm going to go ahead and, first, I want to make a statement about prioritizing when it comes to the vaccine, if people do choose to do it. I have a hard time with anybody saying that one life is more important than the other in regards to who gets the vaccine first. I say that with first responders out of that, meaning if they're a first responder, absolutely for the vaccines first. But any other career field that follows that, whether they work at a grocery store or as a teacher, I find that disheartening that that would even be a suggestion. Number two, my question would be to the, the school district, if the vaccines are going to come through, are we looking at the vaccines being considered a mandatory for children to take it, or educators? And if you do require the children to be vaccinated, or educators to be back in the school in person, are you going to allow that if someone gets sick from the vaccine, that you will wholeheartedly allow them to sue the school district based on the fact that this vaccine, nobody knows the outcome of it two years from now, 30 days from now, or 10 years from now?
I can share some information, and then Jen can, can follow up. Certainly, the, a vaccine that was established to, to be given during this time of emergency order, it cannot be made mandatory in our state. And I don't believe that the governor or anyone else is moving towards that. The manner in which the vaccine was moved by, you know, the FDA makes it not a requirement. It's, we actually cannot make it a requirement. So I can assure you that, certainly, it will not be.
So if I might also add to that, individuals 18 and younger, at this point, are not receiving the vaccine. This is only for, for adults. And as Dr. Bishop mentioned, it's, since it's authorized under, if, if, if the FDA approves under, under emergency use, it can't be, it can't be mandatory. So it'll be an optional or a decision by individuals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I do a quick follow-up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I, I absolutely, Dr. Bishop, want you to know, as my district Eagle River out here, we wholeheartedly agree and support you to open up the schools. They are excited to do so. They want to do so. It's the health of our children. I see kids smiling that they think the schools are going to open this time. And I encourage you to do so. And thank you so much for stepping forward and having this happen. And also, thank you to Elise. Thank you so much for doing this for the community. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your vote of confidence.
Are there any other board member questions or assembly member questions regarding the COVID-19 vaccination plan that has been put forward tonight? All right, I'm not seeing any. I guess I have a plan as we're here for education, you know, of our of our children. I guess, when do we see through either, you know, the vaccine testing or potential distribution being available to children under the age of 18? Where do they fall in any of this plan?
I'll defer that to Jen Petronas, but presently, the trials for people under 18 are presently going on. So, they haven't been completed and haven't been authorized by the FDA, but there are presently trials, and perhaps Jen Petronas can talk to that.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, to the school board, to President Vicalis. I don't have an answer for that. I know they're currently doing trials on children 12 and up. However, those are not complete yet, and they do not have enough data. So, the what I've been hearing is maybe summertime, so maybe before we return back into next school year. It could potentially be available, but I can't be sure.
Thank you. All right. It is 7:12. We have two items left on our agenda, member comments as well as public testimony. I would like to give any members of either body an opportunity to speak, but hopefully wrap it up by 7:20 so that we can give our five speakers the last 10 minutes of our meeting. Any if anybody from either body had something that they wanted to comment or share on, if you could just raise your little blue hand, we'll go ahead and get an opportunity for you.
Thank you, Madam President. And yeah, just want to make a quick comment of how much I appreciate these meetings and the opportunity for both the municipality, the assembly, and the school district and the school board to work and collaborate on all of these really important issues that we have before us. So, really appreciate these opportunities and looking forward to continuing our collaboration. And also understand that these, the communications subcommittee of the school board, I don't know if that's the right name for the particular committee, is reviewing a resolution. And so, happy to engage in that process, however the school board feels necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. And that communications committee is tomorrow from 4:30 to 6:30. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands up in the queue. Board Member Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really appreciate the time with everybody as well, and I also very much appreciate the educators being given priority because we want everybody to be safe. So, thank you very much.
All right. I want to thank everybody and just echo Chair Rivera's comments as well. These meetings are always good collaboration time, you know, to come together. At this time, I'll go ahead and move on to public testimony. I do have five speakers that are in the queue, and I believe at least maybe four of the five are online. The first one up is Speaker number one, Danielle Kemp. Danielle, are you with us tonight?
All right. Can y'all hear me?
We sure can. And you've got three minutes, and the floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank everybody for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Danielle Kemp. I'm a retired Army Combat Officer and teacher in the ASD. I'm also co-chair of the Alaska Black Caucus's Education Committee, as well as a proud parent of ASD students. I would like to start off with something I believe runs a little contrary to information that was put out today. About a month and a half ago, an ASD HVAC representative gave a briefing to our school on HVAC operations in preparation for that, you know, that then opening of November 16. Well, during his briefing, I asked if the air is recirculated from room to room, and he confirmed that it was. And I then asked him if the air filtration protects against like the transmission of coronavirus particles. And he said he didn't know, but he also said he didn't know of any filtration system that protects people from exposures to the virus anyways. So, I think that this HVAC issue needs to get resolved before we move forward with reopening classrooms, because that's we got some contradictory information going on. So, I must warn this body, though, and and the general public about opening classrooms too early, especially without a COVID-19 vaccine widely available. An outbreak in our schools would would be disastrous, not just for our schools, but for the entire municipality. Because keep in mind, we're all part of the same community. Furthermore, children of color make up half the students in the district. On top of that, people of color make up a disproportionate amount of the negative impact, at four times more likely to catch coronavirus, 5.5 times more likely to be hospitalized, and three times more likely to die of complications from COVID-19, more so in our Alaska native community. The end result of opening classrooms too early is that the academic and opportunity gap will only continue to widen, but with added tragedy of the disproportionate impact of illness and death from COVID-19. So, instead of prematurely opening classrooms this spring, the Alaska Black Caucus believes that a better approach would be to postpone opening classrooms until the summer of 2021, when the COVID-19 vaccine should be made widely available to all citizens, at which time we should then implement a district-wide summer school program with additional weekend support to get our students back up to speed in preparation for graduation or the new academic school year in the fall of 2021. In the meanwhile, the district should provide additional academic support to students and families that need it, the same resources that wealthier families currently that are currently utilizing and are able to afford, but poor families cannot, such as access to safe and healthy outdoor play opportunities, access to organized recreational activities, mental health counseling, which is extremely important, especially nowadays, dependable broadband access and quality of service, not that iffy stuff my Title I students are forced to endure, help setting up a quiet and comfortable space. Oh, so let me just go ahead and end then. Thank you for notifying me. These things that the district and assembly can help with right now, and I pray you do, because time is not on our side. So, the Alaska Black Caucus looks forward to working with you and the school board and assembly on these and many more matters that benefit our children, communities that we serve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up in the queue, Speaker number two, Mike Davidson. Mike, are you with us tonight? Mike, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can. You've had three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm going to be brief, because I do only have three minutes, and I've been fairly politically correct in my comments previously, but I'll probably be less so now. I don't mean to sound offensive if I do. I'm a frontline worker in the healthcare industry, and what the school board is proposing, along with the school district, along with school recommendations, proposing is completely unreasonable. I'm glad that the assembly's online. I'm hopeful they're here to hear it. There are no experts, say people, doctors of epidemiology or virology on the line in here, as I can tell. We've heard a lot of speculation from people that don't have expertise in those areas. It's obvious to me that the administration of Anchorage School District is bent on moving forward with in-person schooling. And unfortunately, in the Anchorage area, we face a very, very severe situation. We know that. I'm glad that the assembly is well aware of that. It's dire. It's going to be the worst public health crisis of a generation. Currently in America, we're suffering, as we all know, a 9/11 every single day. I appreciate the school district's recognition that children are generally asymptomatic when it comes to COVID-19 in terms of patients, which is the exact reason that because they're asymptomatic, they generally don't get tested. So, we have poor surveillance. There's no plan from the Anchorage School District for sentinel event testing or surveillance of their populace in terms of the students. The students generally will be asymptomatic, but we know that they are absolutely asymptomatic carriers that can transmit the virus to other people. We are facing very, very dark days in our near future here in Anchorage, Alaska, and our nation. It's absolutely not the time to be having discussions about large group gatherings. It's a much more appropriate time to be having discussions about how we will bridge the gap until, as we've discussed tonight, we all have the opportunity to be vaccinated and can try to see the light at the end of the tunnel of what we face is COVID-19. I absolutely do not support the return to in-person education at the Anchorage School District. If we look at the Anchorage School District's indicators on their website, we are exceeding or near exceeding all of the thresholds in the critical metric sessions. And despite the Anchorage School District's administration's assertions that there is a reasonable way to return to in-person education, we're simply dealing with an airborne virus without the fallacy. And the fact that children are asymptomatic carriers does not negate the fact that they are carriers. I certainly appreciate your time. Thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next up is Speaker number three, Eugene Carl Haberman. Eugene, are you with us tonight?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can sure hear you. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
I'll start my timer now. My name is Eugene Carl Haberman. Forty-three years a resident in Alaska, 20 of those years an Anchorage resident, and currently a resident in Matsee Valley. First, I want to stress the, well, first, I would like to wish the best, my best wishes to Mayor Quinn Davison and her situation dealing with COVID. I wish for her speedy recovery and and the very best. And all lack and sure going through this scenario, a quick and speedy recovery. Now, what to say is, not dressed, is concern, whatever Anchorage does dealing with COVID and measures by the municipality in Anchorage, wherever you do, your your situation is that if you don't have the cooperation of the rest of state, particularly in the Matsee borough, you're not going to be successful. It's going to be an obstacle, a serious obstacle out in the from your next-door neighbor in the valley, where 100,000 people in the valley live. As you may be aware, Cynthia Palmer refused to pass a mask ordinance last Friday. And in the testimony and letters and communications in opposition to the mask ordinance, which was difficult to know whether they came from Anchorage or the valley or wherever, the situation I called it is a rally behind a false narrative dealing with requiring to deal with a mask. And I'll remind you, I've said before, that many of those people are feeling that their freedom has been violated by their force to wear masks, but they're they're confusing freedom with responsibility. Until we as our state are together on this, our country and the rest of people on this planet, we're not going to get through this situation. And as you know, pre-COVID, yes, Anchorage was known to be the crossroads of the world, where people visited Anchorage and Alaska, and they came from all parts of our planet. But the fact is, until the whole planet, the people who live on this planet, deal with COVID, we're not going to get back to a situation where travel is going to be as freely as it was once was. So, the fact is, we need to be working together, not 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 to get, not the other way around. And then I'd like to say one point here, and respectfully, looking at how much time I've got, the the issue of talking about difficulties and millions of dollars of shortages of money, the fact is, you need to stop issuing revising contracts for increased pay and benefits. This is not a time for Anchorage or anyone to to reward government workers with increased pay and benefits. This is not a message to be told to people who are wondering if they're going to have a job tomorrow or be in business tomorrow. And that closes my remarks, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Speaker number four, Annie Massey. Annie, are you with us tonight? I believe it's star six to unmute. Yes, can you hear me? We can hear you. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
My name is Annie Massey. I'm the parent of three children in the Anchorage School District. I'm also the owner-operator of a small service-based business in the municipality. I've testified six times in nine months between the assembly and the school board. Ms. Allard and Ms. Kennedy represent my community in Eagle River, and Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Hallman represent ASD at my local community council. Albert Einstein famously said, "We cannot solve our problems with the same kind of thinking we used when we created them." I really do love this quote, because it accurately depicts human tendency, pattern, and truth. The last item involves sheer humility and accountability to admit our faulty assessments and evaluations have created problems. I believe that this is where we are today. In my opinion, fear of this virus has probably saved us, but is currently harming us. In the beginning, we knew very little, and so fear of the unknown rightly implemented strategies to keep us safe. However, despite knowing a great deal about this virus, we are still using fear to guide our problem solving. I believe in order to solve our problem and move forward, we need to assess our assessment to progress to the reality and truth of what we know now. We know that children are not major transmitters of this virus. We know that most adults have an extremely high chance of survival. We also know how to increase that chance of survival and how to worsen it. It doesn't take rocket scientists to understand and see that data. So, why is this assembly denying a citizen's rights and forcing mandates? And why does the school board continue to be bullied by a labor union while denying our children the books, paper, and people they desperately require to achieve their mission? Since April, the data has supported in-person learning. I'm grateful that we are using found data and that you have the high privilege to use that to inform your decisions, but do not deny that same right to the community in which you serve, and do not censor it to fit your rhetoric. In addition, do not deny the current lived experiences by residents and business owners as the most important set of information with which to inform your problem solving today. With some call anecdotal evidence, the scientific approach should this scientific approach should never be denied, ridiculed, and censored, but it is. With censorship at all levels and without the public testifying, you do not have a complete picture of truth. The reality is that the community in which you serve, your residents, are suffering. Our businesses are losing and closing, and our children have lost hope. Where's the slide, the data slide on that? You won't find it. If we do nothing but live and react to fear, we resolve by ensuring more damage and destruction of more lives, businesses, our children's education, and the economy. Open this city, open our schools, and do not delay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Speaker number five, Sarah Price. Sarah, are you with us tonight?
Yes, can you hear me?
We sure can. You have three minutes, and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Honorable School Board and Assembly Members. My name is Sarah Price, and I am a student from Eagle River High School. I must begin by saying thank you to the Superintendent and the administration for putting the safety and education of our younger friends as a priority of this community with their new plan. They are going to love school. I have chosen to speak tonight because science must be upheld, safety must be put as the number one priority, and we must help the children of Anchorage. And therefore, silence is not an option, not when middle school and high school students will continue to suffer the mental, physical, and emotional effects because of the decisions made by officials on this Zoom. Many months ago, we did not have the data to know what path this virus would take, but now we do have that scientific knowledge, which shows that COVID is not spread in schools. And this is why every major health organization has stated that if possible, send your students back, a message every other state and city has listened to, and now our district. However, you cannot claim you are sending your students back when half of them in are in secondary education are being abandoned based on decimal point differences in transmission, and thus will not return for four months. We now know what virtual school does to children, depletes mental health, causes harmful physical effects, plummets academics, discriminates against those who do not have support, who do not learn the same as most of us. And therefore, we now know that virtual school is not an adequate method of teaching, but apparently, it is acceptable for secondary students. As the leaders of Anchorage, you have to do better than plummeting grades, discrimination- discrimination, and mass mental health depletion in a state with the highest suicide rate. I may be the only student speaking in this moment, but I am only one of thousands who feel like this. The children of your community are suffering, not excluded to one grade. So do not abandon the secondary students because thousands of them are about to become independent citizens in this society, and you will choose what state they join you in. Do not be afraid to change your position with a dynamic issue such as this. As the data changes, our decisions must as well. As James Afrod once said, "Fear is the parent of cruelty." So please, from here on out, let's make decisions for our children in this community based on science and safety, so you can look back and honestly say what you did was right. You did what was right for every single child and left none behind. Thank you all for your time and effort.
Thank you. At this time, that wraps up our public testimony and the end of our meeting. Just a reminder to all school board and assembly members, we do have our next scheduled meetings coming up in March and June. We will determine the dates as we get just a little bit closer. And I just wanted to wrap this up by saying thank you to all school board members, administration, to all assembly members and to their administration that have joined this conversation every quarter with the goal of working together for the, you know, complete betterment of our community. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting and tell everybody to please have a wonderful night and happy holidays.